Dan Campan.
Here.
Hold up.
Here.
Nelson.
Here.
Smithback.
Here.
And Mozen and Bena are excused tonight.
Well, are they? Thank you. Move on to approval of minutes of October 2nd, 2025. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion, we have a second?
Second.
We have a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, thank you. Move on to public appearances, item A. This is part of the agenda allows members of the public to provide information to the plan commission, including items both on and off the agenda. It allows the commission to receive information and to ask questions of a presenter to facilitate a better understanding of the information. Commission members may discuss procedural matters relating to the information, such as whether the information should be directed to a staff or placed on a future agenda. However, commission members may not expand their discussion beyond such procedural matters. Anybody want to speak to anything that's not on the agenda? Anything for public hearing prefer to ask you to wait until the public hearing opens? Nothing? Thank you, everyone, okay, we'll move on then. Communication missing on this business, there's none. Unfinished business, none. New business items for discussion and potential action. Public hearing and consideration recommendation of village board of a proposed general development plan of GDP to the main for the Main Street Manor Senior Living Development at 336 and 334 North Main Street, 333 and 335 Soden Drive, and 133 and 150 East Lincoln Street. The applicant is Oregon Property Investment. Staff report.
All right, I'll give a little background here. I know we've seen this a couple of times in a few different iterations, and we also have a few other approvals on the list tonight. So this is covering really 7A through 7D. Obviously, right now, you're on the zoning step of the GDP. But this is the former Oregon Manor property, corner of Soden and Lincoln and North Main. After the public hearing last month, our administrator, Martin, and I kind of discussed how we had things set up with three different GDPs, and we felt that in order to be consistent with our zoning code, it would be most appropriate to just have one GDP for all the properties since it's one ownership group. But if there are any changes to the properties, the buildings within that down the road, the old dentist office, or that standalone home, that the GDP can be revised at that time when there is a specific plan for that. So all of the properties on kind of the the south side of East Lincoln are included, as well as the standalone parking lot, which I can talk a little bit more in the next item. But that's the conditional use permit just for that parking lot use. This is a different zoning district across the street. So to have that as its own use requires a CUP. And then other items are just their site plan, the SIP, that's item C. And then the CSM would be to combine the lots for the main building, as well as the new parking lot and the stormwater management area off Soden. But no content changes to what you all have seen in the plan before. The site layout, landscaping, you know, the kind of hours of operation and the setup of these independent senior living apartments with no medical care on site, just a dining room and some staff for activities and things like that. So same setup, it's just kind of cleaning up some of that zoning arrangements. And then Lauren has reviewed their stormwater management plan. Is comfortable with that, so it'll get submitted to the counties as things move forward. So we're kind of holding the site plan up for that until we got the stormwater management plan in hand. So she's comfortable with that now.
Okay, thank you. Okay, at this time, we'll open the public hearing for public comments. Anybody want to make any comments about this request to the village? I got a lot of stares at me. Okay, again, if we do have some more as we proceed here, please let us know. Boy, no public comments. I guess we can close the public hearing. All right, we'll move on then, plan commission discussion. We've seen this a number of times. So how do you feel about it? You have a recommendation from our village planner, which is approval. And it's recommend approval for the GDP plan, including the proposed flexibilities for the property listed above contingent to the following items. The final fire marshal approval, that hasn't come through yet, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and then also recording of a certified survey map to combine the property of 354 and 333 Soden Drive, and also 335 Soden Drive. Again, we discussed that. Any comments, anybody? Okay, then we need a recommendation of village board approval of the GDP plan contingent upon the items which I just listed, the fair marshal approval and the recording of the certified survey map.
So moved.
We have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, thank you. Move on to item B, 7B, which is again a public hearing. This public hearing is a consideration recommendation of the village board on a proposed conditional use permit, a CUP, for a transportation use parking lot to serve the primary use of the TR6 zoning district at 133 East Lincoln Street for the Main Street Living Senior Living Development. Applicant again is Oregon Property Investment. Staff report. You already said it.
Yep, this is just that parking lot across the street just to allow that. We wouldn't typically have a standalone parking lot in the two-family residential zoning district. So again, it's still tied to that other kind of zoning approval with the larger project, and it's serving the parking requirements for that larger building. So just kind of linking those together makes sure that that parking is going to be always provided for residents.
And it's been there for quite some time. Okay, open a public hearing. Public comments. I'm not sure what your folks are out here for, but okay.
I think everything else on the agenda.
I see, all right, that'd be fine, we'll be addressing it then, thank you. No more public comments, so we're going to close the public hearing. Plan commission discussion. And again, we've seen this, it's an existing park lot that was associated with the previous ownership and previous usage. There is again a recommendation from the village. From the village, from the lease, basically. For the recommend conditional use permit for the proposed transportation use in the TR6 district, subject to the following conditions. Any other conditions identified by the village planning staff? We don't have any other conditions. So a recommendation of village board approval of this, of it. We have a motion, do we have a motion?
Like the motion?
We have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, thank you. Moving on. Item 7C, review and possible approval of SIP for the Main Street Senior Living Development, 336 and 354 North Main, and 333 and 335 Soden Drive, and 133 and 150 East Lincoln Street. Applicant Oregon Property Investment. Approval of the SIP plan. And again, the lease has a recommendation for approval. But we also again have the fire, final fire marshal approval, recording of certified surveyment, and any additional comments.
Great, just one point of information to know in case you guys do see some activity over there in the next couple of months, as far as residents, not construction. But the fire marshal approval, not necessarily tied to the site itself, they're comfortable with the access and everything there. But internally, there's one side of the building closer to North Main that is, the rooms are pretty much done. It's the, I think, the former nursing home portion that's closer to Soden that is having more extensive renovations, some walls moving, bathrooms being added in those rooms that didn't have those before, and that are being expanded. So one sort of compromise we've worked out with them is assuming all of the zoning and all these approvals move forward. Their contractor, Tim, out here in the audience, he's been working with Scott Strasberg, our fire marshal, to do some inspections inside and to make sure that if folks are moving into the portion that is completed, that it's safe, they don't have access to the construction, that the smoke detectors and things like that are functioning, emergency exits. So I know they've met on site several times. There's a laundry list of things that they want to see go forward. So I think there's, it's going to take some time for those rooms to be ready alongside the construction of the other rooms. But depending on the timing of when the fire marshal is satisfied that the one wing along North Main Street is safe, could be safely occupied, and folks won't have access to construction.
So the village Oregon will then issue occupancy permits, is that correct?
Yeah, so there's the building permit that's really the end of the rooms that are done. Those were really just cosmetic updates, so those didn't require building permit. That was new carpet, new paint, new maybe plumbing fixtures, things like that. The occupant, the building permit and occupancy permits will be for the section that's on Soden. So but they understand that no one is to be living, there's no one living there now, but to be living in the space in the wing that's completed until the fire marshal is satisfied that they have.
So everything is done. You said basically it's the property facing Main Street.
Correct.
Correct, Main and Lincoln possibly, because that's.
Yep, that wing, the two-story wing.
Yes, and that wing, all we did was exterior cosmetic?
Exterior and interior, so there was new flooring. Essentially, just if you were renovating interior space, there wasn't plumbing, electrical, things like that. Essentially moving around, Tim, maybe, I don't know if you want to add any of what's going on on that wing and just how you're working with the fire marshal to make sure that that wing is safe if we have sort of a phased occupancy of the building.
The question I have then is, is there's no requirement by our building code, our village code, that occupancy permit is required for that area?
Correct, right.
Okay, all right, that's my question.
Oh, well, there you go.
Can I ask you a question while you're there? So when we're, I was looking at the site plan with the, where the dumpster is is in the far corner of kind of the property, which makes a lot of sense. How are they going to handle trash inside the building? Or is everyone literally going to like carry like a trash bag outside on the street all the way around to get to that dumpster?
As far as the operations go, so there'll be a staff person that's there, a convenience staff 24/7. So I'm not sure if that person's going to assist with those kind of functions or not, but that's kind of the idea is to have that one centralized location for the dumpster.
Okay, and they'll be able to use that while you're doing construction and that part's occupied?
Unless we do a temporary dumpster over on that side, kind of in that parking lot area off to the side.
Okay, so just something to think about while you're kind of doing that.
Okay. All right, everybody, so I guess we are okay with this. Correct? Need a motion? Want me to make the motion?
Yeah.
Okay, no, I have a problem with that.
Moved approval.
Moved approval, SIP plan that's been presented with the contingencies. We have a second? We have a second, Matthew, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, thank you. Item 7D, review and possible recommendation of village board for a certified survey map at 330 or 354 North Main, 333 Soden Drive, 335 Soden Drive. Combine parcels for the Main Street Senior Living Development. Applicant Oregon Property Investment Corporate, I have to say all that, so. All right. It's all good, and then again, I believe the lease, you say it's good.
Yeah, we just received a revised copy of the CSM right as the packet was going out, so I haven't received the review letter from the engineer. But it looks like all the comments have been addressed, so we'll make sure it's cleaned out before it gets to the board.
Well, yeah, because I don't want to, I don't like to see contingencies on that kind of stuff, so. All right, so we need a motion, recommend of village board approval of certified survey map as presented.
So moved.
We have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor say aye. Opposed, motion carries, thank you. Moving on, for discussion only, conceptual presentation by Hillcrest Bible Church for a proposed annexation and future parking lot and building expansion at 752 East Netherwood Street. The applicant is Hillcrest Public, or Bible Church. Anybody here for that?
I was expecting them, but I'm not sure if they're, they're maybe, the first couple of items would take longer, but I can give some background here, this is.
Well, it's a discussion only.
Yep.
Did they, have they given you enough information?
Yes, I can talk through the memo a little bit and show some maps here. So Hillcrest Bible Church is on East Netherwood Road. It's one of the only properties in the village that is on the east side of Highway 14. So they're on well and septic, they're not connected to public utilities. This was way back in the day, a big 40-acre parcel was split by the DOT right of way for the highway, and this is sort of a lingering piece of that. So they are a very active church, they're growing. They especially have seen a lot of growth in their youth attending services and activities. So they want to have a dedicated youth wing attached to their sanctuary. And I think there might be a site plan they sent us that has sort of a future build out here, page 60. So they, they have the land on their property to, which is kind of that long skinny north-south parcel that's flipped 90 degrees here. But they have the land on the property to do the addition to the church, but not have enough parking. Currently, there's overflow parking, folks park it like La Petite on the other side of the highway and are walking over the overpass, which doesn't have a sidewalk, and to get over there, so or along the street. And so this is also going to help alleviate that issue and have people just parking on site and obviously be a lot safer. So their adjacent property, they've worked with that owner. It's land that is farmed right now. It is in the township, it's in the town of Dunn. And so they would need to annex, and the first step in annexation is meeting with staff, meeting with planning commission, meeting with the village board to kind of just give an update. We will eventually, as they move through annexation, see a site plan revision and everything here. But obviously, they need to have this property be part of the village in order to meet village requirements for parking and stormwater and things like that. So they will be able to have now stormwater management, all of that on the site. I know that they're planning an expanded septic field, as well as potentially a larger well to support spring clearing the building. And so kind of, it sounds like they want to move quickly and start to get some stuff done here, kind of winter, spring, so you'll see this again. But just wanted to give you all a heads up, and if you have any questions or concerns about the annexation or just the project, happy to pass that along to them.
Okay, you guys, any comments on it? They've been a good member of the community.
Yep, yep, we met with them at a staff meeting probably about a month or so ago, and got very excited, they were very excited to have this moving forward.
There's no objection apparently from the plan commissions. All right?
All right, see that again?
Thank you, move on then, boy. Item 7F, for discussion only, conceptual, nope, I backed, boy, I've been going too fast. Yeah, it is F. Eyes.
I know.
Review and possible approval of site plan division, revision for dugouts at J.C. Park East, 456 North Main, a period, excuse me, Oregon School District.
So we're just looking at.
I don't, not try to be blunt, you have to have your name, so she has the information.
And can you speak, can you just pull the microphone up?
All right, Zane Heitz, I'm the building director, the director of building grounds for the Oregon School District.
Thank you.
So we're looking to kind of finish off a piece of the property or the project that didn't get originally done. So the back JV softball field had slab poured, but never actually got the masonry dugouts. What you're seeing on screen is what's at the current varsity softball field. So the idea is just to finish off the rest of it and put the masonry dugouts for the JV softball field in the corner of the property there, so.
Okay. Questions, anybody? Comments? I think it's a great idea. I, it looks to me like we have no issue, it's just, it's going to resemble what we have already in other areas, so. So we need a motion to approve the site plan revision for the dugouts.
So moved.
We have a motion. We have a second?
Second.
We have a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carries, thank you. That was quick, thank you. Okay, review and possible approval, review and possible approval of a site plan revision for the Oregon Splash Pad, 249 Brook Street. Applicant again, Oregon School District. Now you could be up next or something. Okay.
All right, so just procedural background, you all have obviously seen this before. Back in 2017, there was a conditional use permit for the addition to the pool, which had the kind of the mechanical room for the splash pad, as well as some bathrooms that are accessed from the outside. So that's been built, that's already, you know, not necessarily in use, but it's in place. And then the site plan, most recently for the splash pad, I believe was maybe 2020, the last version that we finally brought to planning commission. And I can have, I'll have the school district folks kind of talk through some of the revisions that have been done to the design to make the budget work, sort of where they are now. But Laura, I have worked with them closely as they've gone through the revision. She's comfortable with their stormwater management plan, which is essentially a rain garden, just kind of due to how the water is cycled and things like that on the site. Maybe you guys can talk through some of the features, how it's going to operate, some of the changes since the last version, many versions ago.
Yeah, yeah, this actually started kind of before I was with the school district, so I don't know all the revisions, but this is kind of our final revision. We've worked with architecture or design team. So the little bit difference you've seen here than in the past ones, it actually kind of has a two-tiered approach. So the top half by the bathrooms is kind of at the level of the pool. And then we have the ramp that comes down the side, and then kind of lowered the actual splash pad deck itself a little bit lower just because of that grading issue to save on having retaining walls and whatnot. So the main entrance will kind of be off the kind of the left corner, what you're looking at. We just need to figure out exactly, no, a little further, kind of down the way. Yep, kind of right on that corner, just need to figure out exactly where the grade works perfectly to make sure that that entrance is obviously ADA accessible. So it's still going to be a recirculating splash pad, so everything that's onsite will be, you know, captured, recirculated through, you know, treated, and then, you know, pumped back out. So it will have, like the other splash pads in the area, will have an activation baller. So if nobody's there, nobody pushes it, it's not just going to be, you know, running to waste water, so.
Any comments, please?
Yeah, just the rain garden, that's really for when the splash pad is off, and there's just water that's raining and running offsite.
When it's activated, anything that goes into the drains does run back through into the actual splash pad on the holding tank. If it's not active, then there's diverters that actually turn, and anything that goes into the drain actually diverts off and gets drained out into the rain garden. Obviously, we can't really overwhelm the system if it's, you know, raining out and stuff. So that's kind of the need for the rain garden, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Any comments, any questions, anybody? Okay, you need a motion to approve the revised site plan for the Oregon Splash Pad at 249 Brook Street?
So moved.
We have a motion, any second here?
Second.
We have a second, Eric, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have review and possible recommendation of village board of a certified survey map in the Greenview Preserve Neighborhood Lots 176 through 177 and 180 to 181. Applicant is Veridian Homes.
I'll give a little background here while you're getting settled. So Veridian approached us, they have a new product for their twin homes. They'd like to try over here, and that just required some adjustment of lot lines. So no additional lots are being created. It's still consistent with all of the zoning setbacks that were, all the flexibilities that were permitted in the development approval for Greenview Preserve. And our engineers have also taken a look at this and are satisfied with the CSM comments. But anything else to add here, what we can see there?
I'm Shay with Denofriel Cocking Associates, the engineer and surveyor for Veridian Homes. Nothing further to add, and you know, it's my opinion that's precisely it, is that they're just looking to put in a new twin home product, and you know, it just required some adjustment in the lot lines.
Okay. Comments, questions? None, Matthew? Okay. Okay, we then need a recommendation of village board. Recommendation of village board for approval of certified survey map in the Greenview Preserve Neighborhood Lots 176 to 177 and 180 to 181. We have a motion, Matthew. We have a second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Opposed, motion carries. This is supposed to go this fast, folks, it's not supposed to go this fast. Okay, we'll move on. Review and possible approval of the site plan for Panther Exteriors Office and Indoor Storage at 550 North Burr Oak, the applicant is Panther Exteriors. Are they here?
Yeah, you guys want to come on up and you could.
Yeah, why don't you come on, just tell us what you want to do, and then so then we can. It's, you know.
Make you feel like it was worth your while to be here.
Makes the meeting go longer here, you got to do that. Just tell us, tell us what you're doing, that's the main thing, is just feel comfortable, just tell us what you're doing.
I'm Kevin Sorew with Bachman Construction. We have an existing property, they went through a new CSM process to divide it into two parcels. We're taking the south side, there's an existing garage that will be removed for a new office building and storage facility for Panther Exteriors. We are keeping the existing blacktop intact and working from that. We're putting in two rain gardens to the east and west to capture roof runoff. Typical office hours are, we'll say 7:30 in the morning as people arrive to load trucks, go out to job sites and do the construction work. But again, it's just new headquarters for Panther Exteriors.
Okay. Questions, anybody?
We can scroll through maybe some of the exteriors. I don't know if you want to talk through any of the building materials?
Yeah, do you have a?
Maybe the rendering on page 89.
But it's really for, well, okay, yeah, yeah, site plan, but go ahead, tell us a little more about it.
So this is a metal building, prefabricated metal building. So it will be two different colors of metal exterior. We bumped out kind of the office area just to give some more curb appeal from the corner. There's no additional sight lighting or anything like that, since there's nothing present. But there'll be code-required wall packs, directional LEDs. We do have kind of an inset area at the entrance. That too will be metal, but it'll be a wood look metal. Just galvalume metal roof, and then like I said, gutters running in two directions. It's a monosloped roof shutting to the south, but will be able to capture all of the roof runoff into the rain gardens.
Excellent, okay.
So office use and indoor storage, no outdoor storage of materials, just vehicles?
Mm-hmm.
For the employees.
Anybody have any questions? We need a motion to approve the site plan for Panther Exteriors Office and Indoor Storage, 550 North Burr Oak Street, or Burr, I'm sorry, Burr Oak Avenue, excuse me. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
We have a motion, do we have a second? I have a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Item J, review and possible approval of site plan revision for Quick Trip Car Wash, nine sixteen Janesville Street. Anybody here for that?
I think I get to play Quick Trip tonight, I gave them the night off, so they didn't have to come down from La Crosse for this, so. So you guys are probably not going to be surprised to hear that Quick Trip has realized that there is quite a demand for the two lane car wash. So backing up a little bit, about two years ago, July of twenty-three, you all approved a conditional use permit for the in-vehicle sales and service use of a car wash. And then the original plan was for a two bay car wash. There was a bit of a miscommunication between Quick Trip and myself, they didn't let us know until, you know, building permits had been pulled and construction already started that they had decided to just move forward with one lane. They, I think the response I was given was that they were unsure about customer demand and they wanted to build one. So that's what I was told. So they they built the one and then site plans, if they are not built to basically the specifications, after two years, you need to do a site plan revision. So that's where we are now. So this is the exact same plan that we saw about two and a half years ago, now going to be built out till it's to its full potential. I don't know the details about if the current car wash, I imagine will have to be down for a little while while they do some of the construction. That's obviously on them to sort of figure out and communicate to customers, but same hours, it's twenty-four hours a day, you know, same use there, but no issues with this plan. So all of the site plans and, you know, elevations and things like that are included in the packet.
Okay. Anybody have any questions? I was wondering what was going to happen, so. All right, we'll move on then, we'll state, need a motion to approve the site plan revision for Quick Trip Car Wash at nine sixteen Janesville Street. We have a motion to approve. We have a motion, have a second?
Second.
We have a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, thank you. Item K, review and possible approval of a site plan for Gary Dish Park Improvements at six oh eight Ridgeview Lane, applicant Village of Oregon.
All right, so this park plan has been chugging along at Park Board for quite a while. So now we are at the point where we're moving forward with the design, getting close to bidding, so wanted to bring you all up to speed on on this and then do site plan approval. There are no structures here other than a playground structure, but because of the amount of grading and site work to be done, just thought it would be cleanest to do a site plan approval for this as well. So Gary Dish Park is in Autumn Ridge Phase Two, so it's just south of Foxfield Road where that pops out down into Wolf Street. It has built on a hill, there's a small parking area right on Ridgeview Lane, kind of where that sign is. And then there is a sort of a downslope to another platform area where a playground has been planned and then further down a large multi-use playing field. So this area is very underserved by parks. The golf course, when this was all platted long ago in the nineties, was sort of the green space for the neighborhood, but they really didn't have a dedicated playground or just, you know, regular parks. So there's a lot of neighborhood interest and push in getting this built. And now finally, we have a plan, we've done a neighborhood meeting to get some feedback on the playground, colors, features, ages of kids, things like that. Also, there's a lot of bedrock out here and the grass that was installed by the developer, even though they did put a little bit of topsoil on top, it's essentially growing right on bedrock. And so you can kind of see the condition of the grass here. We definitely have a need for, you know, high quality, larger, multi-use playing fields and in order to, we have an opportunity here with just the size of the park to have this be, you know, a good full-size field, but need some better grass to be able to do that and so kids aren't running and hitting their head on bedrock as they fall. So the plan is to add, is it about twelve inches of topsoil on the field and an irrigation system to, so part of that topsoil is just to cover the irrigation system, but so we can grow some some thicker grass out here and have some more cushion. And additionally, there'd be some topsoil added in the playground platform area. If you want to just scroll to the site plan, they can kind of see the layout of the the park with all the improvements here. There's a couple renderings, we're working with Retler Corporation again, they worked with us at the Highlands Netherwood Park and J.C. Community Park design, so you can kind of see the different elements here. See where the site plan starts. We got a lot of the civil plans in here, but anyway, more fill is needed in the playground area in order to anchor the playground into not bedrock and 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 have a pour-in-place surfacing, have a a stable surface there. So this would be an ADA accessible playground with the rubberized pour-in-place surfacing that we have, those other two parks that Retler's worked on. A lot of the equipment is accessible as well. So I think we have a sheet that kind of goes a little bit more into the playground. So maybe page one thirty-nine, I think, is the site plan, kind of where those start. And then playground is page one forty-one, so if you zoom a little bit there, it's pretty cool, we have a lot of features that we don't have in other parks, some climbers, some larger spinners. One of the slide pieces actually has like a a little ramp that a kid could potentially crawl up if they didn't maybe have use of their legs, but they could still participate in a slide and obviously, all kids will find, I'm sure, all kinds of ways to use that, so. But yeah, we got a lot of feedback from the neighborhood even on the color scheme, so that was really helpful. We even had a couple of kids attend the neighborhood meeting, so always good to get some focus group feedback. And yeah, but the large, we got a lot of site work here because it is on such a slope, we want to make sure we have, at least we'll have an accessible path down to the park, the playground, and then if you just scroll back to the site plan, there, yeah. So number four there is an accessible sort of viewing platform, so that could be there for people, we'll have some benches there, so either folks that are sitting watching somebody play on the playground or if they wanted to watch somebody play on the field. There's too much of a grade change to, it would, it would take a ton of work and a lot of money to have an accessible path down to the field and then have some other kind of platform. So there'll be a really good view of the field from that playground seating area. And then there's sort of a path, number nine there, that's hashed in, so that'll just be a graded footpath creating, it's still going to be a downhill, but hopefully, the path of least resistance to get up and down from the field. There will be a small shade structure, more of a fabric, not like a metal topped structure. That's number eleven and water bottle filler bubbler situation. So some some nice amenities here at the park that we don't necessarily have at all of our neighborhood parks. So it's sort of a hybrid between the neighborhood and a community park as far as size and features. We have a little bit of off-street parking, we have, you know, some of those higher-end features for the playground, but and then a larger playing field as well. So happy to answer any questions, we are taking this back to the Park Board next week and Village Board, so if everyone gives us the thumbs up, we will be bidding this kind of between Thanksgiving and Christmas, hopefully get some good prices before winter and then start site work in the spring.
With some completion sometime early next summer or something.
So completion through the fall, you know, it's not, because it's not a structure or anything like that, it would be kind of a spring through fall, the playground would be playable probably late summer, early fall, and then depending if we would do grass or we are going to do an alternate price for sod, just to see what that is. But that'll still probably need, you know, it'll probably be playable sometime in twenty-seven, depending if we go seed versus sod.
All right, thank you. Any questions, any comments, but yeah, go ahead.
Comments, not only, I mean, I like what you're doing here and and that. Having now lived next door to a neighborhood park for a couple of years, I have an observation about sanitation. There are, a few of the parks seem to have porta potties and other ones don't, and I talked to Jeff Rau about this a couple of years ago, I've been witness to more than one emergency situation where, you know, people, their kids go to the park and if they're going to spend any amount of time there, they're going to need need a potty. So, you know, it's not practical to have a, you know, full restroom facilities, but I would like to at least see that they have a plan for porta potties and maybe a concrete pad that they sit on and that sort of thing so that, you know, people using, I mean, this is a pretty, you know, elaborate setup with a nice playground and stuff, so people are going to go there and spend a fair amount of time there and they need need a facility for potties.
Yeah, no, that's a, that's a good idea. The the soccer club typically in some of the other parks, they paid for the porta potties to be out onsite and they've worked with Public Works on locations and things like that, too. Typically, they are on the grass, but, you know, we can definitely look into that to see if there's maybe a space where just dedicated and just with the grades and everything, make sure it's going to be a s- a stable area.
Well, and access for the truck to service them weekly and and that sort of thing. So I, you know, I think going back to the Park Board, they should should look at other parks that I think need that and, you know, the Village Board may have to look at, you know, that in the budget cycle of, you know, how do you pay for that and that sort of thing, but it's definitely a needed amenity to, you know, really bring out the ultimate use of the nice parts we have.
Okay, great. So it appears that we're all in agreement here, so we need a recommend our approval of the site plan for the Gary Dish Park Improvements at six oh eight Ridgeview Lane. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
We have a motion, we have a second. We have a second, Matthew, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, thank you. You folks just came in, were you here for a particular item?
Phil Crest.
We are with Phil Crest, yes.
Oh, we already passed that.
We already passed it.
We're almost done.
We already, yeah. You know, the meeting, the meeting starts at six thirty. I understand.
Yeah, yeah.
We we like an audience and we like you to be here right away and just watch all of us do all this stuff. It was, we had no problem with it, we appreciate it and we approved it, yes, we did.
Well, thanks for coming.
Yes, but thank you for coming down, appreciate it. I like you, we try to speed along, but okay. Yeah, well, tonight's kind of different, I don't know why.
Agenda was kind of misleading, we kind of breezed through some stuff.
Some of the stuff's pretty easy. Not at all, no, 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 don't apologize, no, I'm just giving you a hard time, that's all. Gave me an opportunity.
I gave the spiel, so, yeah, appreciate all the background info that you provided, though, that was very helpful.
Yeah, so Elise represented you extremely well. Okay? Yes, you have any questions or comments at all?
No, I I just have a copy of the petition letter, if you'd like to have a hard copy of that.
Yeah, we can take that.
And then that'll also come through on the application.
And you'll need to give Joy your name and address so she knows, so you put that in the minutes that we received that.
Daniel Haley. H A L. An address, is it?
If she needs it.
No press by, we'll try to.
Thank you, thank you very much. Any other public appearances or anything? Okay, move on then to Director of Community Development Report. I suspect this is Rich's pot tonight, is that correct? We're going to put you on the spot, Rich.
Okay, sounds good.
Not for, not for these, but just any public works projects, Lauren.
Yeah, anything, an update on where we are at public works projects, so.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, as as we know, well, well three is currently down right now. They are about to remove the chemicals from the wellhouse itself and that I believe is scheduled for next week, not the week after, I'm not totally sure. Well, number six is chugging right along, nothing really to report there and.
We just linked to that for FYI.
Yeah, the street, all the street work has been, Oak Street I see is, does that be, is it, you going to stripe that, I'm not sure, was that supposed to be striped, I'm just curious.
Yeah, Oak Oak Street is right about at ninety-nine percent. We are, that's another one that's saw some drastic changes in the last month, as you all know, and they're right at the end there.
Yeah, I believe, I asked Lauren about the striping, I think typically they don't include the striping in the road projects just so they can kind of get the contractors to wrap it all up. And usually we use like seven hills or something like that to do the striping, but I believe the plan is to have that done before winter here.
Okay, and then I, you know, I'm just thinking of areas in the village, the reason, you know, residential developments, Veridian obviously is going. And are they going to be pouring, are they going to put down a base course yet and everything for their streets? I don't, haven't seen any sidewalks in yet, I see some of the.
For phase three.
Whatever's going on to the northwest corner of it, yes.
Yeah, I am not as up to date on.
I'll go and expect.
The private, yeah, it's in your backyard.
It's my backyard, so, well, I'm just curious, but you know, I see they have, the grading and everything's pretty well accomplished for the sidewalks. I didn't pay much attention to the to the curb and gutter, but that goes so quickly typically that, I'll look at it, I'm just curious.
Yeah, there's a small park that Veridian installed, they wanted to include that, kind of usually we'll just have the parkland dedicated and then kind of like Gary Dish Park come a couple of years later and do the improvements once things have kind of settled in the area. We know sort of slid there and and the construction items are wrapped up, but as an amenity to their residents, they want to say, you know, we have a playground and everything.
They do.
So that has pour-in-place, that has a, you know, playground structure and everything as well, so they fronted the cost for that and then their park improvement fees that are typically paid with each building permit sort of applied to that balance that they've paid. So they'll get to a point where they'll pass that and then the the new park improvement fees will be collected for for other parks.
Okay, what about the the park that that I would think would have been in by now, that's just north of Richards Road in the southeast?
Yeah, that's their phase two park, that's a passive park, so I haven't been out there recently, but that's just a pathway and then I think maybe some benches, but just.
There's trees also.
Just trees, yeah, so it's just a, just a green space buffer, it's more of a passive kind of walking area where you could have a picnic or something like that.
So when I have my neighbor angrily discussing with me how come the other trees were just removed, when can I tell her that the new trees are going in?
We'll find out for you.
I'd appreciate it, okay, thank you, thank you. Thanks very much, okay, move on, noting that planning, it's already going to be two thousand twenty-six in another month and a half. Note the the dates. And December fourth, okay, December eighth, or January eighth, okay. No other future meeting items, do we, items, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
We have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
We have a second, any discussion? We are adjourned, thank you.